This is Right to Life Radio with John Girardi on Power Talk 96.7 and AM 1400. A production of the Right to Life of Central California. And now here's your host, John Girardi.
Today is the 49th anniversary of Roe v. Wade. And I'm hoping it's going to be the last anniversary of Roe v. Wade with Roe still on the books. Today, we're going to understand the case, we're going to learn about the case, understand the background and history of the case, and get a more specific understanding of its impact on what was one of the worst and most important Supreme Court decisions of all time, and the prospects that it will be overturned this year, and that its 49th anniversary will be its last. This is the John Girardi Show. It's not the John Girardi Show, geez Louise. This is Right to Life Radio with John Girardi. Jonathan Keller's not here with us because he's out in Washington DC for the National March for Life. Our supporters from Right to Life of Central California are in the bus on their way to San Francisco for the Walk for Life West Coast. And so, on this anniversary of Roe v. Wade, it's been 49 years, and we're going to discuss it. I've done this show, I think, a number of times, but it is the actual anniversary, and it's a momentous time right now within the pro-life movement that we could see the actual last days of Roe v. Wade. And that's something that, as of, frankly, as of whatever day Election Day was in November of 2016, I don't remember if it was that, November 2nd or 3rd or something, whatever it was the day before that, I was not sure that I would ever see the end of Roe v. Wade in my lifetime. I thought it was just too entrenched, and the odds of getting a majority on the Supreme Court willing actually to overturn it were so slim, and especially after the death of Justice Scalia in 2016, and what seemed, for anyone who looked at the polling numbers, would seem like the likely scenario that Hillary Clinton would be elected president in 2016 and have the opportunity to replace Antonin Scalia. I had a very strong feeling that we might never overturn Roe. And now we're on the cusp of it happening possibly this very June. So, let's describe and let's understand what Roe v. Wade is and what Roe v. Wade did, and to get a kind of broader understanding of just how radical this decision is. So, prior to Roe, the United States had never, at any point, whether in legal statutes or at common law, or in any way, shape, or form, had never recognized any kind of right to abortion. It had never been thought of as a right, it hadn't been protected by statute, it had been criminalized in the old common law system. So, common law is sort of the tradition of American law, of American and British law, where basically laws are created by judges. Judges, and this is going back in pre-revolutionary America and England and early post-revolutionary America, where legal doctrines came to be defined over the course of time and centuries by judges issuing decisions on certain topics, and those decisions being passed down through a system of precedent. So, at common law, abortion was not recognized as any kind of right. At common law, abortion was prosecuted, and there's evidence of abortion being prosecuted, both early in pregnancy and late in pregnancy, both before what's called quickening, which is an older English word that literally means coming alive, the point of coming alive. And the thought was that before, at some point early in pregnancy, you were pregnant with a body that was not en souled, with a body that was not actually alive, because we're dealing with pre-19th century embryology here, like Aristotle, where in many cases, we're dealing with 4th century B.C. embryology, but the best science seemingly we had on it was Aristotle. So, people didn't think necessarily that unborn children in the womb were alive until quickening. And quickening was thought to be a big deal, that was the point where you could feel the baby moving. And once you got to quickening, you knew, okay, well, now we got a live organism in there. And there was some distinction made at common law between pre- and post-quickening abortion, and in part, this was because it was an evidentiary principle, it was a principle of evidence. Basically, you knew that there was a child if the woman had experienced quickening. Okay, there was actual evidence that an actual abortion had taken place rather than a miscarriage, or whatever. So, there was never a right to abortion in America. The Supreme Court in 1973 took a country that had some of the most restrictive abortion laws in the world, and overnight mandated, as if it were a mandate of the Constitution itself, as a fundamental right, a right as fundamental as your ability to speak freely on political topics, a right as fundamental as your right to keep and bear arms, a right as fundamental as your right to go to church on Sundays, declared that abortion was just such a right, that it was protected by the Constitution with just as much force as the right to speech, and for an officer to get a warrant before he searches your house, and not to have a British soldier quartered in your house. A fundamental right to have abortion, and thereby overnight took the United States from a country with some of the most restrictive abortion laws in the world, preventing abortion, safeguarding human life, to the most liberal abortion laws in the world. And I'm not saying that in a political sense, I'm saying it in a more general sense, it's loose, it's free, it's liberal, that the most permissive abortion laws in the world mandated on every single state in the Union overnight. From January 21st, 1973, we were one way, and January 22nd, 1973, we were a completely different way. Now, the Supreme Court, what they did was they said that the Constitution itself guarantees the right to abortion. So, they looked at the 14th Amendment to the Constitution, and they said, hidden in the 14th Amendment, which says that no state shall deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, that there's a right to privacy hidden in there. Basically, the idea is you cannot have due process of law in the United States unless there is a right to privacy. Which, this was from a Supreme Court decision about a decade prior called Griswold versus Connecticut, that the idea of a right to privacy existing within the Constitution, existing there within the 14th Amendment. Now, that's kind of a hand-wavy argument to say there's a right to privacy. I mean, what does privacy even mean? It seems like a kind of big amorphous concept. Certainly, some private things are protected by the Constitution, but not privacy writ large. Okay, yeah, the privacy of your home is protected in certain ways by the Fourth Amendment, that officers need a warrant from a judge before they can search your house, but privacy is not sacrosanct, and privacy was restricted to certain things very clearly. And certain things that we would think of today as not private, excuse me, certain things we would think of today as private were very much prosecuted by state governments early on, after the time of the ratification of the Constitution, and well past the time of the 14th Amendment. You know, stuff like adultery. Adultery was outlawed in many, many, many states. So, the Supreme Court said, well, there's this right to privacy sort of hidden in the Constitution. And in Roe, they expanded upon this idea of this nebulous right to privacy by saying it also included a right to make certain kinds of private medical decisions, which is a joke, because there's just a whole sea of ways in which the federal government regulates the practice of medicine and regulates private medical decisions. We're in the midst of COVID, kind of, you know, I mean, now, you can say, well, COVID vaccine decisions, that has a public impact. Abortion kind of does too, it has all kinds of public impacts. All kinds of medical decisions have all kinds of public impacts. The notion that abortion as a medical decision is somehow private and therefore excluded from regulation is nonsense. Anyway, so the Supreme Court says the 14th Amendment protects the right to privacy, and the right to privacy includes the right to make certain kinds of medical decisions, and that includes a right to abortion. And there's a lot of hand-waving, and a lot of yada-yadas when you make those arguments, because it's just not there. There's just no conceivable way, looking at the legal history and tradition of this country, looking at the understanding of the Constitution as it was ratified in the 18th century, looking at the 14th Amendment, which was ratified after the Civil War, looking at the public understanding of this, to justify somehow creating a right to abortion as something secured by the Constitution. If anything, you can make a much stronger argument that the right to life is guaranteed by the Constitution. Both the Fifth and 14th Amendments say that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property, either by the federal government or by state governments, without due process of law. And in abortion, you are depriving someone of life without due process of law. There's no trial, there's no judge, there's no ruling, there's no evidence presented, there's no, I mean, unborn child has done nothing wrong. You can make a much stronger argument that a person, in the original understanding of the Fifth Amendment and 14th Amendment, that the word "person" should refer also to unborn persons. Anyway, in spite of all that, the Supreme Court in 1973 said, no, the Constitution mandates that abortion be protected. And we fail, I think, even as pro-lifers, we fail to understand the impact of that. What does it mean for the Constitution to protect something as a fundamental right, a fundamental right that applies against states? What it means is that no state can gainsay that. No state can gainsay what the Constitution commands. Look, if the state of California tomorrow tried to outlaw the Presbyterian Church, I always use this example, and I apologize to my friends who are Presbyterians, I think Kyle Goddard's a Presbyterian, sorry Kyle. If the state of California passed a law to outlaw the Presbyterian Church, what would happen? Well, it would be struck down in the federal courts, and the federal courts would say, this violates these Presbyterians' rights under the First Amendment of the Constitution, the right to free exercise of religion. You're saying that Presbyterians may not freely exercise their religion? That's wrong. This law cannot be enforced. We're issuing a court order preventing the Attorney General of California and any law enforcement officials in California from enforcing this law banning the Presbyterian Church. So, no state can just make a law that contradicts what the Constitution mandates as it's applied against the states. No state government can make a law like that. The federal government can't make a law like that. Our US Congress in Washington DC can't make a law like that. The state legislature in Sacramento can't make a law like that. The state legislature in Austin, Texas, or in Olympia, Washington, they can't make a law that gainsays the Constitution. So, not only did Roe say that abortion needs to be legal, and well, I'll explain why it made abortion legal for all nine months of pregnancy and for any reason, why that is still the law today. Not only did they make that the law of the land, they also banned any state legislature from adopting any other standard. They prohibited any state legislature from saying, boy, you know, okay, so we have to have a right to abortion, okay, well, maybe let's just have first trimester abortions be legal and ban everything after that. Nope, not allowed. Because the Supreme Court in Roe got into such nitty-gritty detail as to protect the right to abortion as such for all nine months of pregnancy and for any reason. We'll explain how that happened, and why that is still operative today. Even today, journalists, and, well, I mean, journalists get a lot of things wrong, but all kinds of people have grave misunderstandings about how American abortion law operates today, that it still does safeguard as a constitutional right the ability to have abortions at any point of pregnancy for any reason. We'll discuss that next on Right to Life Radio, right here on Power Talk 96.7 AM 1400. So, today is the anniversary of Roe v. Wade, and as a result, I'm going into detail about Roe. And I want to sort of explain to people that Roe, how Roe's fundamental holding, protecting legalized abortion for all nine months of pregnancy and for any reason, how that came to be, because a lot of people don't actually think, they maybe have read the opinion once, or they read a media accounting of the opinion, and they don't think that's what the court mandated. They think that the court, well, they mandated abortion be legal for the first trimester, and maybe for the second trimester, but states can ban abortion in the third trimester. Or they think, well, states can ban abortion after fetal viability. And they don't understand why it is they can't. So, in order to understand this, we have to understand that today is not just the 49th anniversary of Roe, it's the 49th anniversary of Roe v. Wade's sister case called Doe versus Bolton. And Doe versus Bolton is almost as important as Roe, and the two worked in court, you know, the two cases sort of go hand in hand. They were issued on the same day, they dealt with many of the same kind of topics. Roe was challenging the abortion prohibition law on the books in Texas, Doe was challenging the abortion prohibition law on the books in Georgia. And here's what the court came up with in Roe. The court came up with this bizarre structure that abortion is regulated on a trimester system, which again, they're supposed to be interpreting the Constitution, they're supposed to be interpreting the 14th Amendment of the Constitution. This bizarre framework for how abortion should be regulated in the first trimester this way, in the second trimester this way, in the third trimester this way, there's no possible plausible argument you can make that that's somehow hidden and embedded in the history and tradition of this country, or in the history and tradition or text of the 14th Amendment. This was the Supreme Court just acting like a super legislature, just deciding what the Constitution should say. So, basically, their argument was, well, it's not an argument, their dictate was, that in the first trimester, you can't regulate abortion at all, it has to be legal. In the second trimester, you can issue some health and safety regulations for mom, but not for baby. So, it has to be legal in the second trimester. And then you can ban abortion in the third trimester, as long as you have a health exception for the mom. And they sort of mumbled that part out. But it was really important, because what counts as a health exception? What counts as a health risk to the mom sufficient enough to give someone a constitutionally protected right to have a third trimester abortion? Doe versus Bolton answered that question, and it said literally any health problem is sufficient to justify abortion, even things that we would not even think of as health problems. So, they defined health so broadly, you could drive a Mack truck through that definition. They included mental health, psychological health, familial health. Because a lot of the Roe decision, it was focused on not the burdens of pregnancy, it was focused on the burdens of taking care of a child. And so, the idea is, oh, well, my familial health indicates that my familial health would be at risk if I had this baby. Literally, every person with an unwanted pregnancy can say it would negatively impact my familial health. That's what an unwanted pregnancy means. I don't want to have this baby, I'm not in the right circumstances for this baby. So, if you say you can have abortions, you have to have legal abortion for the first two trimesters, and you can only ban abortion in the third trimester with this health exception, but the health exception includes literally every pregnancy conceivable, then effectively, you've mandated legal abortion for all nine months of pregnancy for any reason. Now, we talk about Roe so much, but really, the operative case governing abortion law in America is Planned Parenthood versus Casey, which was a 1992 Supreme Court decision. We thought the court was going to overturn Roe, they didn't, they issued Planned Parenthood versus Casey. And all Planned Parenthood versus Casey did was change the dividing line from the second and third trimester to pre- and post-viability, which is somewhere around 22, 23, 24 weeks. That after viability, you can ban abortion, but you have to have an exception for the mom's health, and that health definition of Doe versus Bolton is still there. So, I think this belies, and we'll end the segment on this thought, I think this belies the idea that people have, that Roe is somehow a moderate thing. People say, well, you know, I don't like abortion, but you know, I think Roe v. Wade, you know, it's moderate, I mean, saying that people have a right to abortion, but you know, I don't like third trimester abortion or anything. If you don't like third trimester abortion, you should not like Roe, and you should not like Doe versus Bolton, because that's what they mandate. We took a country that basically had abortion illegal from sea to shining sea, and overnight, on January 22nd, 1973, it had legal abortion for all nine months of pregnancy for every reason, with no ability for state governments to regulate it. All right, when we come back, how the Fresno City Council is apparently considering honoring the anniversary of Roe v. Wade, next, on Right to Life Radio. A shout out today to my dad, Dr. Joe Girardi, who is out of the hospital and feeling better. Love you, Dad, hope you're feeling good, and glad Holly and I got you that enormous baseball book. My dad's been having a rough week, so we're glad he's out of St. Agnes, he's doing good and feeling good. So, anyway, kudos to my dad. All right, I want to talk a little bit about something that's happening in Fresno. Now, today is the anniversary of Roe v. Wade. It is a very dark day for many of us, for many, many people in Fresno, and yet, and yet, our Fresno City Council is apparently considering taking up a resolution on Thursday the 27th. Honoring in a way, really, trying to honor the anniversary of Roe v. Wade and acclaiming reproductive freedom. And this seems to be carried by some of the more liberal-leaning members of the Fresno City Council. Now, I know where we stand on this, and I want to sort of talk about this. So, this would be a non-binding resolution. It's a non-binding resolution. All it is, is the Fresno City Council saying, yay abortion, yay reproductive rights, or whatever mealy-mouthed way they want to get around it. It's basically the Fresno City Council saying, yay abortion. It doesn't do anything, it's not like it's going to fund abortion, it's not like it's going to do anything one way or another. And there are two sort of responses to this. One response would be, this is silly. This is just the city council engaging in silly partisanship, it's not addressing the real problems, that real California, that real people in the city of Fresno are facing. This is silly, that we should be focusing on actual brick and mortar, you know, common sense problems, and what about crime, what about police, what about this, what about that? You know, that's what we should really be focusing on, and the city of Fresno shouldn't be getting itself mixed up in stuff like that. And there's a place for making an argument of that sort. The problem is, when you make arguments of that sort, you also can get maybe a counter response of, well, if it's just symbolic, why do you care? It's just a symbol, it's just a thing, you know, maybe you don't like it, but you know, that's all right. It's not doing anything, we're not funding abortion, we're not promoting abortion, you know, we're just saying, you know, we're honoring the fact that people have reproductive rights. What's wrong with rights? You don't like rights? If it's just a symbolic thing, why do you care so much? And I think we need to respond to this in a couple of ways. First, the notion that it's not, it doesn't impact something practical. I would argue very much it does impact something practical. We have research from researchers at Fresno State, from St. Agnes Medical Center, from Valley Children's Hospital. This is research that I used in helping develop the Obria Medical Clinics of Central California, and to try to promote the reality that we need more clinics like this, that there is a major gap in the San Joaquin Valley in the provision of prenatal care, actual prenatal care, actually delivering babies, that we face huge gaps in that regard, that it's something like 77% to 79% of women in South Fresno don't, that only 77% to 79% of women in South Fresno get any prenatal care at all before they deliver. So, you're talking about almost a quarter of women in South Fresno don't get any prenatal care, a fifth to a quarter of all women in South Fresno don't get any prenatal care before they deliver. And that leads to all kinds of very tangible health problems for women in this city, okay? Whether it's high rates of infant mortality, for women and their children. So, high rates of infant mortality, low infant birth weight, and then all kinds of problems for mom. A lot of people, their prenatal care consists in crashing an ER somewhere in Fresno when something goes wrong with the pregnancy, and there's a lack of access. There's a lack of, you know, you can expand Medi-Cal coverage all you want, and Governor Newsom, you know, very much toots his horn on expanding Medi-Cal eligibility, but the fact remains, if you don't have doctors and you don't have providers who want to take Medi-Cal patients, it doesn't necessarily do you a lot of good, and there just aren't a lot of places that are willing to take Medi-Cal patients, or taking patients with no insurance, and, you know, do the work of getting them signed up for emergency Medi-Cal, get them signed up for Medi-Cal. There just aren't a lot of providers who do that. And we see ourselves with the Obria Medical Clinics of Central California, yes, it's a pro-life mission, but more broad, it's addressing problems that literally anyone, and I don't care if you're pro-life or pro-choice, these are real problems in the city of Fresno. And this real problem is not like lack of access to contraception, all right? Like, and this is the thing, liberals think that support of reproductive health providers is addressing all these huge public health problems. No, Planned Parenthood is doing nada to address the problems of lack of access to prenatal health. Only one of their two clinics provide any kind of prenatal health, and it's pretty minimal, it's not very comprehensive. They are an abortion provider, that's what they do. If you look at their, if you look at their bottom line, their profit and loss statement for the year, how much money do you think they're making from prenatal care checkups? Zilchurino? How much money are they making from abortions? It's their prime generator of revenue, it's the most billable service they have. Their focus is not on prenatal care. And guess what? When you don't have access to prenatal care, when you don't think you have a doctor, when that is, you know, maybe you're already struggling with lack of security factors in your life, maybe, you know, you're not sure about the father of the kid, or your family, you're not sure if your family will be supportive, or you're not sure about your housing situation. If yet another stressor on you is, I don't know where I can go for prenatal care, it makes you that much more likely to abort. Celebrating reproductive healthcare, by which we just mean abortion and contraception, that's not, that is, in fact, an act by the city council of ignoring something that is a very real, very big problem in the city of Fresno, particularly in South Fresno, and in outlying rural communities outside of Fresno, in Tulare County and Madera County. So, before you tell me, oh, it's just a symbolic thing, you know, no, no. Look, symbols matter, they matter. Symbols matter, flags matter, statues matter. They are profoundly educational. Why do you think when communists take over a country, they rip down all the old statues and put up communist propaganda statues and posters and flyers and artwork and all that? Because they understand that people have bodies and souls, and that symbols communicate non-verbal concepts that are very real and very important. They're profoundly educational. Why do you think we had a huge fight in Fresno over whether or not to fly a gay pride flag from City Hall? It's because flying that flag expresses something. It doesn't express nothing. So, while there's a part of me that's sort of sympathetic to the argument that probably a lot of our conservative friends will make, that this isn't something the city council should be getting itself tangled up in, this is just silly, blah, blah. Well, it's not that it's silly, I would argue that it is actively harmful. One, it's actively harmful because you're celebrating the murder of unborn children, first and foremost, that has to be fundamental to us. But secondly, a thing that I think is more broadly agreeable to the city of Fresno in general, is that you're putting blinders over your eyes as to what is the real public health problem, the real public health problems that are being identified by St. Agnes, by Valley Children's, even by researchers at Fresno State. It's a lack of access to prenatal care, that's the problem here. So, don't, so it's not just that this is silly, or just a meaningless, you know, symbolic gesture. I reject that notion, it's not meaningless. In fact, symbolic gestures are often very meaningful. This is a position that's going to be taken by the city of Fresno, as expressed by its elected officials, that abortion is something good, that the right to legal abortion is something good and to be celebrated, and it is not. And it is not addressing the public health problems that we see in this city, it's not addressing the public health problems we see in this region more broadly. In fact, it's putting blinders on that. People will, there are liberals who think that if you give money to Planned Parenthood... People will, there are liberals who think that if you give money to Planned Parenthood, that you're helping reproductive care. You're not helping reproductive care, you're helping the opposite of reproductive care. You're helping birth control care. That's what you're helping. Because they don't provide prenatal care. They're not really helping people. One of their clinics provides prenatal checkups. But the chief bulk of what they do is not to help people have babies. It's not to help people reproduce. So in what way is it reproductive? It's contraceptive care. It's contraceptive and abortive care. It's birth control care. That's what they provide. So don't tell me, "Oh, you know, we're in favor of helping, you know, fund reproductive care." What's reproductive about what Planned Parenthood does? Zilchurino. So that, that's, I think, there are lots of substantive arguments to be made against these symbolic gestures. And by the way, if symbolic gestures don't mean anything, why are they putting it forward? Why are they putting it forward if it doesn't mean anything? It means something. I don't know how many more ways to say it, that like, people have this attitude that government is about nuts and bolts, just practical things, just common sense that everyone agrees about. And I hate that phrase "common sense." This is John Girardi kind of going on a little bit of a political rant here, so bear with me. I don't know that all the views here are expressed or those are right to life, but bear with me. People have this attitude that government is just about common sense. And I hate that phrase "common sense," because usually it's brought up in the context of an argument where by definition, if you're arguing about something, then the sense is not common. If it were common, you wouldn't be arguing. Anyway, there would be commonality between the two sides arguing. And people have this notion that, "Well, good government's about nuts and bolts fixing problems." And it's like, no. Identifying something as a problem involves certain kinds of value judgments and ethical judgments and moral judgments. And if we conservatives flee from the actual arguments at play here, then I think we're abandoning the field in a way that's wrong. We need to oppose this, and by the way, we're gonna have information about this on the website, rtlcc.org. We want you to get in touch with your city council members to urge them to vote no on this measure. All right, when we return, we'll have maybe a little bit more about this and a little tribute to a friend of our organization who passed away and was laid to rest this week, Pastor Tyrone Carter, next on Right to Life Radio. We love Jonathan Keller. He's off in Washington DC rubbing shoulders with the rich and famous, with all the big shots in the pro-life world, not hanging out with schlemils like me. So anyway, bon voyage to Jonathan. Don't let the door hit you on the way out. Just kidding, we love Jonathan. We will welcome him back with open arms next week after his glorious return from Washington DC. All right. So this week, several things all happened at the same time, within the course of the same week, that I sort of want to connect and connect in a way to honor a friend who passed away and was laid to rest, a great friend of Right to Life of Central California, Pastor Tyrone Carter. This week was, is, you know, today is the anniversary of Roe v. Wade. And earlier this week, we had the ribbon cutting ceremony for the Obria Medical Clinics of Central California, which is a subsidiary corporation of Right to Life, something that we've been working on for a long time. We had one of our patients cut the actual ribbon and open this new clinic. And we're so happy and proud to have this thing up and operational and running. And it was a lot of happiness and some bittersweet moments too, being at my friend Pastor Carter's funeral. So Pastor Tyrone Carter, he was the pastor of Apesys Apostolic Ministries Church in Fresno, and he was a longtime friend of Right to Life of Central California and a vigorous, effective advocate for the unborn. If every pastor, if every religious leader in the city of Fresno had the zeal for the unborn that Pastor Carter did, the solicitude for women within his congregations who maybe had experienced abortions, if everyone had his kind of zeal for the cause of life, we would be a much better world. This would be a much better city and a much better world. Pastor Carter passed away at the age of 71 after his second go around with cancer. And I'm glad that he's not, you know, in a place, that he's not suffering anymore, because I know he was suffering very badly in the last months of his life. And I, you know, here we are at this point where Pastor Carter was one of the board members who hired me. One of the board members at Right to Life, who was part of the Board of Directors that hired me and was my boss, one tenth or one twelfth, whatever, however many board members we had at the time, one twelfth of my boss. And he was so distinguished for his, his constant energy to volunteer for absolutely anything we were doing, any educational event we had, anything. He was there. His enthusiasm, his good humor. I remember once, he was as quick to laugh as anyone I knew. And I remember one time, his, if you had a good joke once, he would laugh at it for the rest of time. I remember once, my dad often repeats this phrase when someone looks really worn out, and it's a comparison to a horse, I guess, that it looks like, like a horse who's really been treated badly and who's really worn out and ragged. You say, "That looks like you've been rode hard and put away wet." And I remember I said that once to Pastor Carter. He's like, "John, how are you feeling?" And I was really exhausted. I think I'd been working hard on something. I said, "Pastor Carter, I feel like I was rode hard and put away wet." He thought that was the funniest flippin' thing that he had ever heard. He just died laughing, like slapping his knee, laughing. And every time I would see him after, somehow the phrase "rode hard and put away wet" would always come up again. Just the funny, one of the funnier, it's one of these things where, I don't know that he was particularly funny, but he just laughed so hard at things that it made you think he was funny, because he was just such a happy and warm and genuine and good-humored man. And to commemorate him, I have this quote. It's this quote that we read every year at our auction when we honor our honorees. And it's kind of an important thing for us as an organization, something we always repeat. Our former, our late board member Debbie Bone always had this, something very important to her. So this is a quote from Congressman Henry Hyde, who was this longtime pro-life advocate. "When the time comes, as it surely will, when we face that awesome moment, the final judgment, I've often thought, as Fulton Sheen wrote, 'That it is a terrible moment of loneliness. You have no advocates, you are there alone standing before God, and a terror will rip your soul like nothing you can imagine. But I really think that those in the pro-life movement will not be alone. I think there will be a chorus of voices that have never been heard in this world but are heard beautifully and clearly in the next world. And they will plead for everyone who has been in this movement. They will say to God, 'Spare him, because he loved us.'" So with those words, thank you Pastor Carter for your life of service. All right, we will now end the show with a very ridiculous song by Louis Prima to completely destroy the mood. But you know what? I think that's how Pastor Carter would have liked it. So Pastor Carter, we love you, and our prayers for you and for your family forever. We love you Pastor Carter. That'll do it for Right to Life Radio, and we'll see you next week.